Hello and welcome to this edition of Profiles on Pasco. I'm Doug Tobin, Public Information Officer with Pasco County Government. And today's topic, we're talking about human trafficking. It's a very serious problem and with us today are our two special guests, Corporal Alan Wilkett with the Pasco Sheriff's Office, and from Sunrise Pasco, the CEO of Sunrise Pasco, Kelly Sinn. And both of you are with the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking. Thank you for both being here today.
Absolutely.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it. What is the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking?
Well, in 2015, we began an effort to create a commission on human trafficking that would actually be overseen by the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners were presented with the facts of human trafficking. We talked about its impact on local community as well as a global perspective. And there was a real need, a real concern, to make sure we created a commission that would bring together legislative efforts and public awareness. And that's what that focus of Human Trafficking Commission is. And it represents various segments of our society and community. For instance, faith-based community, tourism. You can talk about Sunrise, which has a human impact, and safe harbors, law enforcement, child protective investigators. Bringing together a collective effort to hit this need, which, as you described, is a serious need today, human trafficking.
One of the big pushes that you do is education. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The educational side is to raise public awareness. A lot of times, people will say, "I've heard of human trafficking, but don't really know what it is." We took on the responsibility of making sure that our community, A, understood what it is and the impact that it's making, and also to bring a legislative remedy to the problem of human trafficking, which of course is what the Board of County Commissioners does on a local level.
The program hasn't been involved very long, but you've already had a lot of key successes. You've had an ordinance, and tell us about some of the successes that you've already enjoyed.
Well, the ordinance dealt with signage. As you know, the state has put a big emphasis on human trafficking as well. Attorney General Pam Bondi's office was given the task of creating signage to go in rest areas and truck stops and high-vulnerable spots for human trafficking victims. The Board of County Commissioners, based on that law or that statute, was also given the authority to create additional signage that would be placed in highly vulnerable areas. So we created an ordinance that would say, "We want the same language of the Attorney General to be in highly vulnerable areas." And in our particular case, Pasco County, we have a class of business license called, what we affectionately call, the SOBs. And they are the sexually-oriented businesses. Well, we said, "That's a highly vulnerable area." So this ordinance addresses putting the state language into a conspicuous area, the lobby, but also taking it a step farther. And working with a victim of human trafficking, who was trafficked right out of some strip clubs, both in Pasco and Pinellas, we said, "Let's use language that would appeal to the worker, not just a general language." And so we created a plain language sign that is required to be in all the female dressing rooms along with the bathroom stalls, where that may be the only place that that victim is out of view from her trafficker. So that's what that ordinance addressed.
Kelly, tell me a little bit about Sunrise Pasco and what you do on the commission to further the effort.
Okay. Sunrise is the local certified domestic violence and sexual assault center for Pasco County. And a lot of times, there are co-occurring victimizations. So when you are a victim of human trafficking, you have also experienced victimization sexually, physically, emotionally, verbally, mentally. So we work with the identified victims that seek services for us, whether it's shelter, safety, they need support, they need a place to stay. And so I think because of that element and that component is where I offer my expertise and the support that my agency has to victims of human trafficking, because there's really not a lot out there in our community for them.
How important is it to reach these potential victims of human trafficking? You mentioned the signs, part of the ordinance in Pasco County, but those signs are targeted to reach a specific audience. Tell me a little bit about that.
Well, I think kind of going back to what Alan was saying about the signage and why we wanted to use somebody who actually was a victim of human trafficking was really important, because a lot of times, victims don't identify as being, they don't self-identify as victims. And they form almost a traumatic bond to their trafficker. And so getting somebody to realize that, A, they're a victim, and then, B, seeking services is really tricky, because there is a huge component and huge element of fear. And that's a lot of times why they stay. Fear of, you know, "They're going to hurt me. They're going to hurt my family." There's a lot of threats. They've been isolated. They have no support system. And oftentimes, they don't even know where they are. They're moved around from place to place to place. So they really have no sense of where they are. For us, it's nice when we actually do get somebody who will pick up a phone and reach our agency for services specifically. And they oftentimes aren't seeking services as a human trafficking survivor. They are seeking services as somebody who was sexually assaulted or somebody who was physically abused. So for us to bring that, you know, kind of shed that light on to that issue of their experience is really important.
And I think, just to kind of just build a little bit on what Kelly just said, one of the things that we did out of the ordinance was create a county task force. And the task force was both law enforcement, code enforcement, Fire Marshal's Office, Department of Health, building inspectors. And we said, "We're going to go in and inspect these targeted, vulnerable areas to ensure sign compliance," you know, that they're complying with the ordinance. What we found when we went there, and one case in particular, is we found that in one of these quote-unquote "gentleman clubs", one of these sexually-oriented businesses, the dressing room was actually a shipping container. That the girls, the dancers, were going into a shipping container to get into their attire to work a shift, walking outside in public view, you know, on the backside of a building, to go into the physical structure. It was unsafe. It's demeaning. It's demoralizing. So part of the educational campaign is not just to the public, but it's to those victims that don't self-identify, that realize that you've been brought into a cycle of demeaning behaviors that's lessening the human experience. And we want to make sure that's elevated.
When you talk about the task force going out to these adult-oriented businesses, some people will think, "Excuse me, that's just about the sheriff's office." But it's interesting. You mentioned fire rescues involved in this task force, Pasco County building inspections is involved in this task force. Tell me about a time, I understand there was a recent effort where the door, the fire escape, was actually blocked. And how dangerous is that potentially as well?
Well, once again, the task force was not created to thwart the constitutional right to have a business. So it wasn't that. It's public safety. It's the safety of our citizens that's involved. And in the case that you just mentioned, this was an adult bookstore that's in our county. You go into this adult bookstore, and first of all, the filth that was there, and again, the demeaning atmosphere that's there. But they also had the back door that was bolted, that you couldn't even open it. You couldn't escape if there was a fire in the facility. I asked the person who was the attendant at this, as you call it, the adult-oriented, I call it an SOB. The attendant there had worked there for several years, and her response to me was, "She has never seen that door be opened. It can't be opened." And the hazard that's there. So our responsibility is to ensure compliance. But even beyond that is to elevate the human experience, which means that educational and awareness piece.
Again, today's, we're talking about the human trafficking. And we're talking specifically with two members of the Pasco County Commission on Human Trafficking. Let's just go back a step. What is the definition of human trafficking?
Well, human trafficking is, by law, was established in 2000, called the TVPA, the Trafficking Victims Protection Act. The TVPA described it as the harboring, transporting, exploiting, trafficking of human beings by the means of forced fraud or coercion to exploit or to gain money or financial means through a victim or some means of acceptance. That TVPA defined human trafficking in three areas. And so there are three forms of human trafficking. We talked specifically about kind of the sexually-oriented or sex trafficking, but there's also labor trafficking. So there's the labor side of this, forced labor, where maybe agriculture, or it may be construction trades, landscaping, nail salons, which a lot of people don't recognize, is a huge population of forced labor.
I didn't know that.
Nail salons, Chinese buffets, things that sometimes we don't think of, but there's forced fraud and coercion that is putting those victims into those, either debt bondage or those places of vulnerability. And then there's the domestic servitude, the house servant, the house slave. Those are the three forms that are recognized under the TVPA as the human trafficking crime.
So if you're trying to find out where human trafficking is, the public has a responsibility here as well to maybe engage people that they come in contact with. You said, "Servitude," that may be some that you may have hired unbeknownst to you that may be involved in human trafficking. Let's talk a little bit about how people can help solve this problem.
So I think, just to kind of back up a little bit on the servitude piece, it's, you know, typically, they'll have these individuals most oftentimes residing in their homes and they're working, you know, providing childcare, providing care for the elders, and cleaning and doing all of these services. Much like with the forced labor too, you'll see really long hours and little to no pay at all for this. And one of the biggest differences, I guess, in kind of identifies is apparently, they don't let the individuals eat dinner at the dinner table. And I always thought that that was kind of interesting and how just demoralizing that is for somebody. And I've seen where they give them a room and they provide them a room, but the room is actually a closet. And there's sometimes multiple people residing in a space smaller than what the three of us are occupying right now. So as far as the public in identifying, and I know we may talk more about this later on, but I know identifying, and Alan will have a lot more to offer, but identifying is, you know, kind of really being more observant than anything. And I can assure you, at some point in time, everybody will run across somebody who is a victim of human trafficking. And, I mean, there's a lot of identifying factors and ways to, that once you're aware of them, will kind of pique your interest and you'll say, "Hey."
Let's talk just a little bit about the scope. How big of a problem are we talking about here?
Well, let me pull it, just for the sake of foundational, let me pull it from the global perspective down to a local level. The International Labor Organization, which is a very credible sourcing, says that there are 20.9 million who are involved in human trafficking today. You take groups like the United Nations, and they have the number at 27 million. There are some groups that have it as high as 38 million. But if you pull it down to the ILO, the International Labor Organization, 20.9 million. Of that 20.9 million, 14.2 million are involved in the forced labor. It's the largest numbers involved in that. There's about four and a half million that's involved in the sex trafficking. And their numbers have 5.5 million children who are victims of human trafficking, all the way from sex trafficking and illegal brothels. You've got 12-year-olds who are working in brothels. Right in our local community, you have child soldiers. You have things that are the most abhorrent behaviors that are involved in those numbers. Sometimes we look at numbers and it can just be a number, but these are actually human beings that are represented behind every one of those numbers. 20.9 million. And when you consider the Polaris Project, who runs the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and they track the number of calls that are going into the National Human Trafficking Hotline, which gives us at least a base of maybe some hotspots of where human trafficking prevails. They show the United States as being one of the number-one consumers of human trafficking in the world. Of those 20.9 million, we, the land of the free, are recognized as being one of the number-one consumers of human trafficking victims. And according to their hotline, Florida is the third-largest reporter of human trafficking cases to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Then when you drill down to the Tampa Bay area, we're recognized as number-two in the state, right behind Miami-Dade. When you drill down even further, we see it on street tracks. We see it in orange groves. We see it in high-end hotels. And one thing that I think is so important to recognize is, again, that number recognized as a human being. And when we look at that, I see so many people who, with misinformation perhaps, always identify as maybe an immigrant. This is our own citizens that are being involved in this as well. We see women, men, children, boys and girls. We see transgender, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender community involved in it, vulnerable people that have been... So you can't reach out and say, "That's what it looks like." It looks just like us.
Well, and I think going into that, human trafficking really is a market-driven criminal industry that really focuses on the supply and demand model. And it's really, really frightening to know that billions of dollars were generated by selling millions of individuals yearly. And even going back to talking about the national hotline, the national hotline reports to that number increased. It jumped 35% last year. And that's a substantial job. I think that there was, what, 8,000-plus reports made to that hotline just in 2016. And that's a substantial amount of reports. And those are just the reports that are being made. That's not necessarily what's going on around us. Those are just things that have, you know, reached its way to the actual national hotline.
Those are unbelievable numbers. And Corporal, I've heard you've talked about, you know, why people are involved in human trafficking as far as profitability is concerned versus maybe a drug trafficker. Tell us a little bit about what you've learned in your experience that sometimes a drug trafficker, you know, would rather deal in human trafficking because of the ability to do it over and over again.
And that, you made a great point there. And I think when you recognize that human trafficking is now the second-largest criminal enterprise in the world. Second, just behind the drug trade. The drug trade is going to operate at $55 or $60 billion a year. And as Kelly said, billions of dollars are being generated. And one of the big market drivers, if you want to look at strictly from a marketing standpoint, is that with a drug, I can use it one time. But with a human being, I will sell them over and over and over again, profiting every single day. Use the sex trafficking model for just a moment. Because when I gave you the number, that four and a half million are involved in the sex trafficking, but out of the billions that are generated, about 75% of the profit comes from the sex trafficking model. And the reason that is, is because if I have a brothel and I have a stable who is working that brothel, when I consider that they're going to be, and I hate this word by the way, but they're going to be servicing 12 to 30 men a night at $25 or $30 for a half hour. 12 to 30 times that, if we want to get technical, they're being raped. That many times a night. The impact that that makes on that human experience, number one. But secondly, the illegal trade and activity that happens beyond that. So that's the toll that this is making. Most experts believe that in the next eight years, human trafficking will be the number-one criminal enterprise in the world, which is why we have to stop this now.
Well, human trafficking is high-profit and low-risk, so...
It's scary when you talk about it in those terms. When you say Florida is ranked third in the number of calls in the National Human Trafficking Hotline, I think a lot of people sitting in suburbia will say, "Well, this isn't happening where I live. This isn't happening in rural Pasco County, or this isn't happening in the west side of Pasco County." Tell me your experiences as to what you've seen. And is it hitting home right here?
Well, people always think that it's happening somewhere foreign and that it's not necessarily happening here. Unfortunately, it is happening everywhere. And it's happening in all 50 states and even specifically here in Pasco.
And just to kind of, to feed off of that, we had a big event in January. January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. So the Sheriff's Office, along with a lot of community partners, including our Human Trafficking Commission, which is called No More Pasco, we put an event called Light Up the Night. It's at Wiregrass, the shop's at Wiregrass. It's in the parking garage. It's a great event to bring awareness and public education. But we're at that event, and while we're at that event, I'm having a lady come up to me and say, "I'm going to give you an address and a phone number, because there's a 60-year-old woman in Zephyr Hills that's being held in a shed. Every night, she's being put in a shed and locked in there with just a little bowl of food." This came right out of our January Light Up the Night event. I sat in my office just a few days ago and listened to the story from the Crisis Center of a 13-year-old girl from Pasco who ran away from home, which again is another high-vulnerability marker, ran away from home into Pinellas, was met there by a 21-year-old trafficker who transports her to Miami. And for 45 days, they don't know where her 13-year-old daughter is until finally she's rescued. And how many times has she been raped or violated during those 45 days? Put out on the street just to be able to have survivor sex, just to be able to survive on the street. This is happening right here in our own community, which is why, as a community, we've got to take ownership of this, because law enforcement can't solve this. We can't solve it from Sunrise's perspective alone. But together as a community, we can make a difference.
Let me talk a little bit about the runaway effort, because it could potentially affect every parent out there in Pasco County. What should parents be doing? Talking to their children, watching social media? What do you suggest as professionals and working on the task force?
So I think part of that is understanding, I guess, the vulnerability and the youth vulnerability piece to what traffickers often look for, target. And you will see that there are kids, specifically those that are in the child welfare system, that are often targeted for recruitment efforts. And majority of the children that do get trafficked come from either a runaway program or they come from some type of a social service program where they don't have that. And if you think about how people get involved or why people get involved in trafficking is because they're always looking for a better life. They're always looking for something more. They're always looking for love or something like that. That a trafficker is going to promise them. And that incentivizes them to want to, you know, get involved and stay involved in this, you know, group. And from there, they can, you know, form really traumatic bonds with the trafficker. And so as far as parents and, you know, social media and what to watch for, I know that there are recruitment efforts in the deep, dark web, and Alan can speak a bit more to that. But really, understanding that a child who is in the social welfare system, a child that is a runaway, is at an extremely high risk of being trafficked.
Do you think anyone could be a victim?
I can promise you, anybody can be a victim. It can be men, women, adults, children. You know, we talk about the vulnerability, and though there are certain, I guess, heightened indicators that can lead to somebody being more susceptible to being a victim, but who doesn't want a better life? Who doesn't want something more? Who, you know, anybody that has experienced violence in their past, anybody who has been exposed to domestic violence, sexual violence, or any sort of trauma, it takes a really long time to overcome those psychological effects that abuse and violence has played on somebody. And it's almost like traffickers feed off of that vulnerability. They can identify that there is somebody that is still struggling with that, and that's an easy target for them.
Usually, when you talk about human trafficking or the sex trade, it's probably the first thing that comes to mind. But you brought it up, an interesting point that I haven't thought about, some of these vulnerable populations, that it actually could be men too. Migrant workers could be forced into servitude. Talk a little bit more about our vulnerable populations that we see out there.
Well, first of all, Kelly identified it very well. And Doug, you asked an important question. The runaways, certainly. And Florida has 30,000 to 40,000 runaways a year. So you're already talking about a large pool of vulnerability. Then when you add that to the child welfare system, you talk about foster care, and you talk about some of those disengaged, where the children are looking for those love and belonging and things of that nature, those vulnerabilities. And Kelly made an interesting statement, and I'll put it in probably sharper terms. But these predators, and that's what they are. These traffickers are predators. They know how to find a vulnerability. And to your question, anyone can then become a victim because we all have a vulnerability. And they're very gifted at coming in and finding that vulnerability. So we have the snatch. We have the guy that will snatch somebody off the street, a 15-year-old teenager who may be walking alone. But that's a very small part. Most of them are actually lured in to the business. They're lured into the life with promises of a nice purse and shoes and bling. And you go right down the list. Finding that vulnerability, a new pet. It would be amazing, some of the vulnerabilities. So these vulnerable populations can be, and those populations of both men, women, can be children specifically that we find being targeted by these predators, who are targeting them for the life, as they call it.
I want to make sure that we hit on all these areas before the program ends. But we were talking about members of the community and how you can potentially identify some of these victims. But let's talk a little bit more about hidden in plain sight. You'd mentioned the 60-year-old woman that was probably hidden in plain sight. But we really have to be on the alert, day in and day out, to see if these victims are really out there and are being hidden, maybe not even being looked at, people you may not have given a second look. Maybe take a second look as you go through your daily lives.
Well, I think, and it's, you know, kind of what I always catch myself doing now, is when you're driving through neighborhoods or looking at your neighbor's homes, you'll notice the ones that have maybe the boarded-up windows. They might have fencing around. You're going to see a lot of traffic coming in and out at very odd hours. And you'll never see the same people there. And that's what's interesting. And I guess, you know, going back to really the whole dynamic of human trafficking, it's all about power and control. It's all about the trafficker gaining power over their victim so that they can control them. And part of that is, and a very large part of that, is victimization. And victimization through isolation. So you don't need, you have the intimidation and the threats, but then you have the isolation. So you're going to see people moving, and movement are moved, or their victims are moved from place to place. So you're going to see a steady kind of flow of different people coming and going, very odd hours. Maybe the windows are opaque on the buildings. So these are just like structural things, of course, to be somewhat mindful of. And I know that there have been people who lived next door to some suspicious activity. And even just calling because, "Hey, this maybe doesn't look right to me. I'm just going to call the sheriff's office and let them know, 'Hey, this is going on. Maybe you want to keep an eye on it or take a peek.'" And then I know that there's additional things on an individual level to kind of identify or watch for. And one of the big ones is not, like I said, not knowing where you are. They probably can't tell you, because they're moved around a lot, what city they're in, what county they're in, hopefully not even what state they're in sometimes. They have possession of no personal documentation, right? They don't have any documentation on them. They have no driver's license, identifications.
And let me swing into just one aspect, because I know our time is running short. And I want to make sure we get this in. That when you talk about the triangle of human trafficking, the three parts that are necessary for the crime of human trafficking to happen, you have the victim, which we've spent some time talking about. You have the trafficker, that we've spent some time talking about. But one of those areas that is of equal importance, if not more so, is the buyer. Reducing demand, because it is a market-driven crime. If there's no demand, there's no crime. So the buyer, we have to look at the buyer. Who is the pervert who is out ordering an 11-year-old girl or a 12-year-old boy? Who is the buyer that, in the sex industry, that is objectifying a woman or a man so that it's only about their own pleasure? Who is this buyer? How do we get to the buyer and shrink the space that that buyer can operate in? And taking that one step farther, because we call that buyer a John. But in the labor market, who's the John? It's all of us as consumers. Who's driven to pay 60 cents less for a blouse than one who is certified as fair trade? Not realizing that that may have been made by an 11-year-old child in a sweatshop somewhere. Or it's being, the garment is being ascertained because they're out into a field picking the cotton. It could be the agriculture that's being picked by a migrant worker who has been smuggled into the country. And so in that case, we have to look at, who is that buyer? So we have to be able to shrink the space that human trafficking is operating in.
We were talking about, if you see something suspicious, maybe call the sheriff's office. I mean, people are sometimes very concerned about reporting crimes or potential crimes, or they're not sure. It's in that gray area. "Well, something suspicious is going on in the neighborhood. I'm not sure if I should call." in the neighborhood, I'm not sure if I should call." What do you say to those people?
Well, Doug, as you know, from the sheriff's office perspective and law enforcement in general, if it looks suspicious, we would rather go take a look at it and find out it's nothing than to have somebody not call, and it turn out to be something. We want to go take a look at that. If it's a crime that's ongoing, it's obviously a 911. There's human trafficking hotline numbers, which is 888-373-7888. We have a crime tips number, the way to get a hold of us through the web. There's a lot of different ways to let us know through the tip line. So we want to take a look at it. And I would encourage viewers, I would encourage people who will see this program, that if you see something that's suspicious, the 60-year-old woman who you find being locked in a shed at night, we need to know about that. We need to know about the child that ran away. Those are the things we need to take a look at. And again, it's not a bother, it's not something that we don't, we want to take a look at it. Let us find out if it's something or not. Make the call.
Kelly, any last words for you as well?
I think just on a community level is to identify, you know, victims, and if you see something suspicious, they buy their clothes somewhere, so, you know, keep an eye out if you are in a department store and they, you know, they're around, just keep your eyes out, observe, don't get involved, because that can put you and the victim at more risk. So just to make that call to the hotliner, to the sheriff's office.
Very good. You put out some really good information there, Corporal. I want to make sure we get that again. If you suspect human trafficking, here's some very good information for you. The Human Trafficking Hotline, it's 1-888-373-7888. Again, that number is 1-888-373-7888. You can also go to thehumantraffickinghotline.org, their website is a great tool and resource for more information. A special thanks to our guests, Corporal Alan Wilkett with Pasco Sheriff's Office and Kelly Sandwood Sunrise Pasco. Thank you both for very informative information that you gave out to us.
Thank you.
And I'm Doug Tobin, Public Information Officer with Pasco County Government. Thank you for joining us for this edition of Profiles on Pasco.